Four minutes after nine and we'll go ahead and bring our work session for April nineteenth, two thousand seventeen to order at this time and I'd ask everyone to please either silence or turn off their cell phones if they would and then join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, I think we've got some changes.
We have two additions, both for the road department. One's a change order related to the Dog Lake project and their equipment surplus list.
Very good. And so our first item of business is Beth, she just walked in, so.
Yay.
Yay.
Good morning.
Good morning, Beth.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
So I just have a contract amendment from the state of Oregon, state and public health, and granting us an additional four hundred dollars, four hundred and three dollars in the family planning program and it's just like, I think it's just them cleaning up their funds for the year. They sometimes will disperse extra funds, we use it for whatever we want and we've already kind of earmarked it just to buy some extra medication for that program. So that's it.
At least it's in the boxes.
We like to see those boxes.
Yep. Well, very good. We do have it on the agenda tomorrow for approval. It's just a quick format as you know, so.
Sure. Yep, okay.
Thank you for coming over.
Thanks, appreciate it. Thank you, thanks Denise. Bye.
And you took it out.
I know.
Come back, may you stay longer.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Jay.
Between this doorstep and I, we've sent about fifty places, airport, Chevy, outfit and van, haul motors. And the only response we got was from airport Chevy. And what we're looking for is a one-ton passenger van for our recruit. We've got from the suburban, the suburban, you know, and that is we have more folks showing for recruit than we have before. So often times we had people off there making trips back and forth to get folks around, party around so we can get more of it going. So we put it out there for one ton, passenger van and airport Chevy give us a quote.
Yeah, to me it looks pretty straightforward and pretty straightforward, this is only the three bids, but I, if you don't mind me deviating from this on the suburban, is it still going to be a functional vehicle for the, for the county? I understand.
I think, I think it could be. It's hard to haul anything heavy or any kind of load in the trailer. Right now we haul aluminum trailer, we're just brush clipping, brush and grass trimmings and that kind of stuff. Otherwise, I probably haul it like, use a range tractor and we're in.
Okay. Are we gonna get it fixed?
I don't think there's a way to fix a crap gram, I don't know what our intentions are for that. There's a lot of title three owners, I don't have, let's say, might say it's county.
Yeah, it is purchased with title three. I guess the question would be, is, that one probably be ready to surplus, I'll get this one on there. I don't, I don't think it really fit forward any place. I guess we can have that discussion in the fleet committee or whatever, but I, I don't, I think this'll, this new one will service your department well and there's not really need for the other one. Denise, have you known of any other department or cascaded that one would fit? So I would give it a little bit of time, give it a new one and then we'll take a look at surplus and that.
Absolutely. So, yeah, I didn't know for sure what the plan was for it.
I didn't either, I just wanted to get this one in, to get this approved and because we're here for these conversations.
So how quickly can they make that available to you?
Well, I know tomorrow's the take action consideration, so once that's, if, if that moves forward Thursday, I'll call them and they just, they're gonna send the van over to the outfit that makes the rack where it picks up on top and they're throwing that in the three, it's a four thousand dollar aluminum rack that sits up on top, will, will then might as well carry fuel and chainsaws and everything up, up top instead of the rig or in the trailer bouncing around.
Yeah.
So probably, I hope there's by then, end of the month, so.
Yeah. Okay. Very good.
Very good.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and pull that down the way. Now that's close.
We could probably get Dave, Dave out here really fast with one resolution, discussion on one resolution. I know that he's got something on his plate today, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd indulge Dave more.
I, I, yeah, I will definitely do that, but I'm looking for you on here.
Is that a resolution?
Okay, all right.
You owe me a cup of coffee, Dave.
Okay. I've got a job I'm gonna be able to do here at nine thirty and then I'm headed to sell and go hear what KBRM has to say about it.
So what does, what job are you looking at?
I thought you were an assessor. What kind of bag was I?
Yeah.
Okay, this resolution.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah. I was appointed assessor back in June and on the twentieth, on July first, I got a done notice from our software supplier that we were six months behind on payment and it was a tune of about sixteen thousand dollars and it was kind of an enlightening moment for me. I talked with Ann about it, we immediately caught that past dues up and got that caught up. The previous assessor had skipped a payment to those folks in the previous year of two thousand sixteen and so we had to play catch-up because we have a vacancy in our office with short one appraisal now and we haven't built that position, but as of today, we've had to ask you to move some funding from salaries to materials and services to cover that.
So it's going from one category to the next to?
Yep. So our budget is tabled, we handled a lot of that and asked for the additional finances, just kind of juggling. And probably the best question that's not being asked and discussed and that is, how does the state do our, with our TAFA grant, think of our vacancy and what's their stance as far as our funding from them? And I've been working with them on this next coming TAFA grant and they're completely good with this and they appreciate what's happening in our county and understand and they know that we're, we're diligent, we're in a built position and we're fully funded from them and will continue to be that way. And even though we've had a vacancy for, gonna be almost three quarters of a year, they're okay with that.
There's not gonna be no reduction.
Very good. I'm very upfront with them about that and the communication with them, I didn't want to paint ourselves in a corner. So from the bigger picture, that's kind of, kind of keep an eye out for that.
Thank you for working on that. I'm sure that's big group, thank you.
Yeah. So anyway, requesting you if you could help us shuffle these money around so we can make our budget, Alex, not in a deficit position.
We'll probably do that tomorrow.
And just as you said, this is all within your own budget, it's just changing categories.
We're just, right, we're not.
Not asking for anything extra.
One pocket or another pocket.
Yep.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Travel safe. Thanks for the help on that.
Thanks, Dave.
What's for you?
Ann, why don't we just continue on with resolutions?
I think you did a great job, maybe you should just stay there for the rest of them. Twenty sixteen dash zero eight is for the capital improvement fund for courthouse plumbing. This became a capital project just to continue with the remodel work and then the whole new plumbing lines and things like that. So again, an appropriations category transfer, we're gonna decrease materials and services, there's savings in that category, and increase capital by twenty-five thousand. So overall, no additional dollars. Just, like you said, transfer from one pocket to another. Okay. Twenty sixteen dash ten allows for the purchase of the van that you just approved from Mr. Greer. So can you need additional capital authority to purchase that van? And he's got some.
We're taking under consideration for tomorrow.
Contingency dollars. So if you decide to approve that van purchase, you will have the authority to spend the dollars. Reducing contingency and increasing capital of fifty thousand dollars.
In the purchase budget?
Yeah, state funding.
Yep.
Twenty sixteen dash eleven is in the wolf deprivation fund. They have just a teeny tiny bit more materials and services than anticipated, but they actually ended up with more revenue than anticipated also. So we're going to increase this fund by six hundred and thirty dollars. We're gonna increase local resources and grant resources and then increase materials and services, six hundred and thirty dollars.
Pretty straightforward on those resolutions. Are you, just, I'm gonna jump away from that real quick, are you anticipating any other resolutions before we get to the end of the year?
Yeah, and actually, we will be publishing a supplemental notice for the ground lift association. They got caught kind of like the assessor did, they're gonna end up paying PRCAPs for almost a year and a half in this one fiscal year. They have contingency dollars to fund that. The other one I'm so watching also is the fair board, depending on the capital projects, they've added to that list, plus they had some other things they were working on too, so I'm just watching that capital category, see what their needs are. It's possible they'll come in with unanticipated revenue to help fund some of those capital projects. So I'm watching that one, watching share salaries, but I think that year end, he's gonna be within this category. And other, just a quick update, the budget is finally kind of in, got a lot more information yesterday, so still trying to finalize that draft for that proposed budget column. Right now, it looks like contingency sitting at around a hundred and fifty thousand, so the work done by all the managers with their direction to look at materials and services and see if we can trim those where they might, where it might be appropriate, has seemed to work. Some managers have come back saying that they can't quite make that work, so they wanted to increase it, so we're on.
Which was all part of the discussion.
Yeah, it was.
It was the starting point, then let's move whatever direction we need to.
So it was a nice way to again, be kind of fair across the board, looking at actuals from prior years and allowing some kind of inflation factor there and starting with that number and then going.
Yes.
The one key thing, it wasn't direction, it was brought to us as a suggestion and so.
It was probably more direction from the year agreement that we needed to do that, but you're right, Commissioner.
Yeah. There was no direction given by.
Has it been?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Kevin, if you can hang tight for a minute, I'm gonna go ahead and have the sheriff. Are you gonna talk about the UHP grant?
I've texted Paul, he was supposed to present, he hasn't responded back to me.
Oh, okay.
I'm assuming he is, I wasn't prepared to do that, I don't have.
No, that's just fine, I just didn't wanna hold you up, I didn't wanna hold Kevin up, but Kevin's got more items, so Kevin.
Let me see if I can get a little.
Well, that's okay, Kevin's gonna come up, okay.
Morning. Morning. I had to see if.
You have.
If there was an order there, but.
Well, the first ones, truck roll rates as far as our.
Okay, we can do that, we can do that one first. So in the planning process of this Dog Lake project, we recognize potential need for extra trucks when we start to haul our aggregate rates back in. And we put out a, an RFQ notice to some local vendors to see what their rates would be for belly dump and, and the trucks. With the call-out period being May first, grew a lot during it, but that these quotes would be good for the remainder of the season. And part of construction came back with the belly dump price of a hundred dollars an hour and Carlin for tandem was eighty-five. In general discussion with these guys, the call-out period is, was put in there because that's the identified time that we're most likely gonna use these, use these extra trucks in an effort to kind of work with local vendors. If they weren't available during that time, we go to the next vendor at that rate.
Well, you know, I sent a question last week on that and I'm just curious if we anticipate whoever the low bid was not having enough trucks that they'd, they'd still run, but they would just go down the line if you needed additional trucks.
Yeah, and, and we did this for two reasons. One, to try and work with local vendors on the jobs that we have here locally, but also to see what availabilities are from there for now and for future use. But doing it in this fashion allows them to be competitive and, you know, work with us rather than to just call someone and say, hey, I need extra work.
Yep. What this does, gives you the ability, if you need more trucks than what, what's available by the low one, whatever, you know what the price will be.
Yep. And that's why in the, I'm not sure if you guys saw the notice that I sent them, but it included that, what I'm calling a call-out period, which would be the time period that we're scheduling or we're thinking about needing these trucks, but also that if we need to transfer material later on in November.
All we got was that there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that, that's okay, but.
This, this notice was sent to them, you're welcome to read it.
No, no, it's, I'm, I'm good with it.
But it was a, like I say, in an effort to try and work with local vendors when our resources are not available or maxed out.
Yeah.
This, this project has taken all, all of my personnel, so.
Very good.
To dial into an exact fiscal impact, I mean, I can give you a ballpark, it won't, it won't be more than fifty thousand because I think in that, planning of that project in four weeks will basically sixteen days of hauling five trucks.
Yeah. Well, you've got, you've got all those figures kind of embedded in the project cost.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I did, you know, as I said, I, I sent a note back and I did receive a little bit more information just because of the boy is on.
Well, I didn't, I didn't realize that this notice didn't get ordered, you guys are welcome, I'll make a copy of it.
I'd have to look at my.
It was just my notice. Just to tell them when the work was gonna be most likely scheduled.
Yeah. I, I just appreciate that you're looking at this because there will be times that you probably have, like, you can call a Jippo operator to call them in and now you have the list, you know the amount, you can find on it.
Yeah, and I think, I think this is, not just for this project, sorry to interrupt you, but I think this is something we'll probably entertain doing in the future on a calendar basis at some time, just so that we have availability.
Yeah, makes sense, but Commissioner Winters just said Jippo and given our last discussion on guardrails, I didn't know if Pennsylvania used a different term for Jippo.
Yeah, the Jippo drivers were actually ones that hold Jippo from the plant, from the actual drywall plant, so difference of.
I'll just get the light type terminology.
Well, I did, did have a local day calling Mr. Pennsylvanian, so I didn't really.
I tell him, he's Mr. Oregon.
Mr. Oregon.
Yep. So you've got a couple of additions.
Yeah, the two additions, if you want, the first being the surplus equipment. So since I started here with the help of some senior operators or foremen and mechanics trying to see what the county needs and what they don't, and there's longer lists than this of items, looking at hours that we've made or used this equipment for and then, you know, somewhat of the budget issue that we have in transitioning into preventative maintenance type work. These are just the first set of equipment that we could utilize that asset in other areas, so. We have an auctioneering company to stop to discuss options with us of surplus in some equipment. There happens to be claim of falls in the next month, a dispersal sale, sale for a rock crushing outfit that's going out of business and other local vendors, so some of these items will be sought after for that sale, so we put them in this, we're doing this auction.
So did we, I know there was some discussion, a little bit, that, you know, the new auction site that we, we started using, any consideration for that site?
Yeah.
Or are we locked in?
No, I don't know that we're locked in anything yet. I guess with this specific auction and the.
Is this the one over by, just outside of by?
No, 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 this will be a claim of falls.
Okay.
It's Richie Brothers is having an auction for a dispersal sale, a company that is a rock crushing contractor that's going out of business, so there's some specialized equipment, but then also looking for extra machinery to supplement that sale. They sell on the internet, they sell overseas, there'll be a lot of eyes that see this type of thing, this equipment on this bus, most all of which can be linked to that mining industry minus the, the older cell blower that gets pushed with the grader that there's no replacement for.
Yeah.
So.
So then our, is the responsible, I know me, me, you and I talked about this a little bit, I never asked this question, who takes on the cost of getting this equipment to auction?
We do.
And then if they also negotiate it down, or they still take it ten percent too, so we.
Yeah, but I didn't, I, I don't know if that was on here, we negotiated with them down a lower commission sale.
Well, that's the value of the online that we do, is they come take pictures right here, we don't have any cost or anything.
Right.
And it goes out to lots, so I, I sort of favor that, that way myself, at least having a shot, you got a pretty tight timeframe. Another comment I have is, is I, we actually have the sheriff's department sitting here, but we always try to look at cascade and something down or whatever. I don't know if they'd be interested in the Polaris five fifty or the ATV for search and rescue or anything like that, but when we have equipment or surplus in that, maybe to be used in another department or something, we always try to look across departments. Dave, he's out here, I don't know if there's a need for another ATV for snow plow or any of that, where we have the, the northlake annex and those type of things, but in, in, this is your first year of, we're trying to look at helping out the other departments at a fair enough value a lot of times, so those two items looking straight off of here might be worth having that conversation with the sheriff's department and with our facilities person on the trailer and ATV, just to see if that's something that they, I don't know the condition of either one, but if they're in good condition, our search and rescue is always needing good stuff and then our facilities up north, we run into some issues of getting the snow piled up there, so I don't know the cost of it.
All learning cross.
And I didn't, I didn't know that was gonna be on the list, but it is.
Yeah, I can, I can entertain that. A lot of these, a lot of these items that we talked about with that representative were items that are used in mining type industry that would be specific to what they're advertising for over there, so coupled with a value that we hope to gain from this surplus to go other directions with more specialized equipment. I can certainly ask that question, but I'll send a message and say, hey, if you have value in this.
Okay. That sounds good. I don't, still don't know what, what action we need to take tomorrow.
Tomorrow we should, somebody's asking for us to approve surplus in those items from the other.
Yeah, I guess we could say contingent, oh, I can make contact with the other departments and make sure that they don't have any surprises if I don't ask them.
Yeah, see if, as Commissioner Winters said, see if it falls within what you're expecting return is on it, if there is interest in it, so we'll be helpful.
Yeah, well, I know I did that with the craft oak kettle and working with the town, but I, I didn't think about it on that, in that case.
Okay.
And the last item is a change order for Dog Lake project. Was recognized pretty quickly when we started this project, that contractor that luckily was awarded this first phase in square yards of asphalt removal and subdigs removal, is really excellent to work with and they actually come into the county on their work and planning and truck driving, things of that nature as well. So kind of thought that through a little bit and decided that we have remaining square yards that we need to remove on this job and if the local vendor, if this vendor was in fact willing to extend that price for remaining square yards, their foreman and myself took an accurate measurement, I think it's forty thousand three hundred square yards left of this removal, recognizing that the next closest bid was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more. If this vendor was willing to extend that price into the next phase of the job, it would be wise of us to at least entertain it, so that's what this is. Because if, if it would, we wouldn't add this, we wouldn't change order and add the square yards, we'd clear it out for bid again and those prices won't go down.
Yeah.
So we know that upfront.
Well, we know that the price that we would give for the low bid would be much higher.
Yep. So next season, if you will, the savings are gonna be at least a hundred and twenty right off the top, plus whatever the, you know, whatever that price increase is.
Yeah.
So on this change order, you'll also see a couple of things that, working with Atkins and the contractor, that we just wanted to make sure of, they, they will have to mobilize again because we are not prepared this specific time to keep milling, but we have to back up and fill in the two point two miles and get that back up to grade and pay it in at this construction season. And a fifteen percent escalation or de-escalation depending on fuel price and that language is in, you know, hopefully you have that.
Yeah.
As well, was one of the things that they were concerned with. In addition to, which you might not be seeing, there were some other items, if you remember, on that contract, we put a lot of options in there that allowed us some flexibility on the job. Some of those things are gonna get deleted, for instance, there'll be alignment and delete of asphalt, salt cutting, we won't meet that. There were some, there were some other things that were put in there. And overage cost for standby time, I think was four hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour, you know, that was bid on and accepted, but we haven't had any standby time at all because our guys aren't keeping up, so everything, everything's working out real well, we're not paying for this machine to sit. I don't know, I, it seemed like when I talked with the owner and he was more than willing to extend his price to us, it seemed responsible for us to at least entertain it.
I, I toured the project, the state commissioner of efficiencies here. Bill Locking being able to save the county the dollars possibly going out for another bid.
Oh, it is.
It's, it's good.
It's total, total sense.
Yeah.
So, yep. Okay. I guess my only last question is, is would you like to hear tomorrow or any things again before? Have you got things on your agenda that? This project moving along? About twenty people up there relying on me to tell me anything, so. No, just go, go your project.
I got to see a couple locals, it's very good for him to work with up there the other day, so. I got to see a couple of locals, it's very good for him to work with up there the other day, so he'd be pretty busy.
Yeah. Plenty entertainment.
I'll bet.
Yeah. I guess it, I guess if you need me, I'll have my phone on.
Okay, thanks, Cal.
Thank you, Cal.
Hop on.
Yes, sir.
Whenever you're ready.
Well, I will tell you that, not to, no pun intended, but I can shoot from the hip on this.
Yeah.
Um, I was hoping that I would have some paperwork to hand to you folks today to present, um, with regard to the purchase of, uh, two side-by-sides, one being primarily assigned to the sand dunes of, uh, North Lake to suffice our OHV grant. The other would be a machine that would be added down here, uh, would be used for OHV enforcement on the south end of the county and for search and rescue operations. The funds for these two items came from the sales of some dune buggies that we sold from last year and, um, a couple of other surplus, uh, vehicles that we sold. Um, the search and rescue did a substantial amount of research on brands, types, needs, um, everything from distance of travel on a single tank of fuel to ground clearances, to hauling capacity, trailer weights. It's substantial what they did and they came up with a recommendation and what they purchased was a Honda. And we don't have a local Honda vendor here, so we would be going out of town for that. Um, the plus to it was, I believe that it was thirteen hundred and eighty dollars cheaper for the Honda versus the Polaris, which we have here. Um, one of the other key things that they used in the deciding factor was that they are steel chain driven versus belt driven, um, like a Polaris. And, um, so that would be our, um, recommendation, forward purchase, two Honda side-by-sides and I can get the price quotes. They are currently selling out your, the year-end models in Ontario, um, a substantial reduction in price, so.
I, I think, Paul, and all the research is great, but, um, you have to put out the specs if you want to get three quotes to follow our purchase policy, put the specs out. You don't name the brand or whatever, I don't believe. I, I have deferred to these, the way our fleet is, but we have a policy set up. So, purchasing policy and everything, so that, um, we don't...
Well, and you named off a lot of the specs, you're looking for the ones that are necessary.
And like I said, they had probably thirty pages of information that they had gathered on different manufacturers, different brands and why this was the way that they had. And, uh, I know some of the, some of the decisions in the past have been made based on, we have a Polaris dealership here, they can do the work on the equipment. But, uh, Christmas Valley sand dunes are closer to Bend than they are to Lakeview and there is Honda dealers up there, so if there was an event and needed warranty work or recall or whatever, it would be just as convenient there.
And I think, I, I'm middle-aged, I'm those kind of machines I have on, but the things you described, it sound like they're valid needs, be it clearance, uh, not belt driven, but chain driven. For, you know, I, I don't know any of that stuff, but, so it's easier just to start it out and then, uh, you get, you get those who can, those specs and, so.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Denise isn't at just two quotes, 'cause that's all we're getting on our vehicle, correct?
We do three, no, we do three on our vehicle.
Um, I've never seen a third.
You may not get a quote back from a vendor or two, but...
So we can just submit, if you just give them a closing time and if they don't get it, then we go.
As long as you went out for three, three vendors and requested a quote, correct? And if they don't, if they don't send it on quote, then that...
Yeah, then it's still suffice if already done.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't make them give you a quote, you know, give them the opportunity to do it.
So today was mainly just to tell you, kind of give you some information and that, like I said, I'd hope to be able to hand you those packets and they weren't provided to me, so I can't give you what I have, but, um, that's the information that was gathered prior to and the pros and cons versus each.
So you, you have one more to surplus that you wanna get on, uh?
We do, we have a, it's a Polaris, um, I'm not sure what year it is.
So you're, you're gonna do that through the same cell, we done with the...
Yes, yes.
...
Yeah, and then we're gonna have two expeditions this year as well, but we'll roll to the, to that.
Very good. So for tomorrow, we have it on the agenda, but it doesn't sound like you'll have those to...
Yeah, I don't think I can have definitive figures, but we could shoot for, are you guys doing it?
Well, I, I think I, I'll just throw out a, um, suggestion here because we may not, unless we have a special session after tomorrow, we need for quite a while, and I think that...
I suppose, you mean, now Wednesday is, uh, uh, budget week, just on Wednesday, we have budget Tuesday.
Just Wednesday.
Oh, okay, then mix that.
Is it that? You're in as of May sixth or maybe...
Yeah, maybe, maybe some.
May third.
May third, again.
If you wanna, if you put this on there, because I will try to get those quotes. How many days do I have to get them to respond to that?
I, I didn't, no work session, just a work.
So I should be able to hit that, I mean, as long as somebody gets me something to work with, but...
Yeah, and I, I can help you, I have a form that you can use.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, so tentative, we'll be on there and I'll try to have those, at least the RFTs back, um, open that, for example.
Three for, three opportunities.
Yep. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, Denise, I'll talk about the conference last.
Okay.
We're gonna talk about here a few items there.
Sure, so the wolf depredation agreement is simply, we were awarded ten thousand six hundred dollars for our degradation, um, due to the number of wolves noted in Lake County. Six hundred of that will be for reimbursement for the, uh, degradation that did occur. Um, and that additional ten thousand will be for, um, degradation purposes for prevention.
And, and so for Mr. Shown, I'd like to bring tomorrow, or possibly in addition tomorrow, um, our local biologist is retiring and we have an open position, um, for, we'll have a good position on the depredation. Denise is gonna do a call down at the committee and I, I think it's gonna be recommended for us to point pause after retirement to a position, so.
Okay.
And, uh, I believe that's all within guidelines. Denise is gonna check it all out, so you may see an addition tomorrow on that.
That works. State transit agreement.
So, this is for our special transportation funds for the state side, um, you'll know that we are receiving less this biennium. This is a, a two-year agreement, you will receive a hundred and thirty-four thousand for our state funds. I'll be following this with the federal one once I receive it, so I'll have it there.
Okay. Very good. And we've scratched off to this time Dave's presentation on the lease agreement for the airport. We'll be taking that later. And so the WIR conference support consideration, uh, the western interstate region of the National Association of Counties moves around the fifteen western states, uh, that belong to what's called the WIR, Western Interstate Region, uh, to different places. Deschutes County is hosting it this year and the Board of Commissioners, uh, have done a, uh, call out to all the counties in order to see if there's some financial support that could be received, uh, in order to support the costs associated with the conference. Uh, the original amount that Commissioner Dany had mentioned that they were trying to raise, I think, was around seventy thousand dollars. I don't have the figures on what they've raised to date, uh, this conference, just as a, a ready reference, is the end of May. I've been asked by NACO to speak at it, so I will be up there. But, the, the, the more important question is, does Lake County want to help support her neighbors, uh, in Deschutes County and the financial needs for this? The amounts that they've listed when they've sent that out, and they're, they're just, they just send it out and say these numbers, but typically they receive either a thousand dollars from the county, twenty-five hundred, or five thousand. There's no having to stay within those numbers, it's just if we feel like we have the ability, uh, to support it, we can pick any number we like.
Well, I, I believe we're, if I'm not mistaken, we made a decision on some dues that we didn't pay this year, so there should be some dollars available possibly in that line item to dues and association fees, uh, which would be very appropriate. I think neighboring county and how important the WIR and all this is, is that we ought to consider, not a lot, but what we are able to, to support this, probably towards the tail end is what I'm thinking, because I think they'll gain a lot of support. Their, their communities want to benefit from the economic of having a conference there, because, you know, I'm sure the public for corporate sponsors would do.
And they have, yeah.
Motel and stuff, I'm, I would like to see Lake County's name there as a sponsor and it's very appropriate.
Well, we will have it on the agenda for tomorrow for a decision, but just out of curiosity, have you got a figure in mind?
I don't, I don't, I haven't checked, but it came to me about that line item within our dues.
Yeah.
And these.
Yeah, we, that was reduced, what, Denise, four thousand? Yeah.
So this would come out next budget year, not this budget?
No, this is for our this budget.
Yeah, so it, it hasn't been reduced at this point?
No, it, it's been reduced and we only made a payment, uh, for our AOC dues minus four thousand, so.
And, so I'm not so sure we want to reduce that one just for things like this to come up, but anyways,
No.
Within this budget year, um, I, I think that, um, we can look at that and I, I would follow a recommendation for your representative in the county, how much you think you gotta contribute. So, um, that's homework for you between now and tomorrow.
I'm gonna recommend fifteen hundred.
Uh, sounds very good to me.
And I'll correct my statement, reduced, it, it hasn't been reduced in the budget or it doesn't need to be reduced, but merely we have four thousand dollars that we didn't expend this year and made us dues, because we decided to reduce our dues payment, so. Yep. So Denise, if we approve that tomorrow, the process, they said, you can just reach out to Laura if you would.
Okay.
Uh, but it, it goes to AOC and it, it goes to her in some fashion, I think it's made out to AOC, but you can get the specific details. She's aware that we are gonna be considering giving this.
Okay, I'll over.
Yeah, okay. Okay, department updates.
Well, we have four, five of them here.
Yeah, and one just got ready to speak.
Uh, we got two new vehicles and, uh, the decals on the vehicles that we had discussed here previously, uh, In God We Trust, uh, are placed on those. Response from the public is overwhelmingly positive, only had one negative comment about them, so I just want you to know they're out there. So if you get comments, even if they're gone, uh, they are out there at this point.
Perfect, that's great. So the, the, the rest of the vehicle in the two that you got look like the other ones that you updated as far as the regular decals.
The only difference on the back of the trunk, I'll show you a picture of it, is, uh, on, on the back of the bed of the truck, it said, uh, has the star Sheriff, Lake County, Protect and Serve. That was on mine in Tom's new vehicle, it was a few years ago. The new ones have the star Sheriff, underneath the stars says Lake County and then to the right of us says In God We Trust.
Okay.
In fact, I'll show you a picture of that, if you're interested.
Well, you know...
Mr. Shown would walk in from the other side and walk around and block on the streets.
I could be that, but more importantly, most rigs, uh, I can read when they pass me what they say, if they have decals on it, but the sheriff deputies, I...
If they're going by you way too fast.
Oh, wow.
Well, I don't know if it's way too fast or not, it's just, they're faster than Dan.
That looks nice.
Yeah.
That's good.
Commissioner Winter's just probably saw that.
I, I haven't seen the picture, but I seen, I, I actually caught that and I went by yesterday afternoon, I did like.
Thank you.
Took my little rig over to give it back. I keep that on my...
Sheriff, any other updates?
Um, we have, uh, Rachel is in the academy, as you know, she's doing real well. She's slated to graduate June ninth. Uh, I'm anticipating that is going to happen with no problems. We have, uh, one deputy just returned full duty from surgery and we have two, um, of our personnel that are out with injuries right now and there is no timeframe, um, that's, we can, you know, say they're gonna be back, it's indefinite right now and we'll just know as, as time goes on as to how their injuries are progressive and, and the needs of recovery.
Okay. I'll say, well, I was gonna say something smart since he was sitting beside you, I used to coach for a long time, kids I would just, uh...
I'm sorry, we have three personnel that are out.
I was just gonna recommend, get that timeframe a little quicker if you just taped an aspirin to his hand. Take care of it.
I just taped it to my, yeah.
What we did is abolish for his crutch.
Okay.
Please, China.
Good.
I'll let you know what I think I'll find, just to stay within the guidelines of hip rules.
Probably, probably good, yeah. Yeah, I'm actually not trying to prescribe aspirin for you, so. There was something else that you, when you were talking about that, I should have been more serious and asked that question, but I now forget. We also have another employee that's gonna start attending the academy, maybe. Oh, okay.
Questions, yeah?
I do remember, it wasn't any serious, but if you have trouble remembering Rachel's graduation date, on the tenth is my birthday and I'm sixty-five this year, so it's just one day before the anniversary of graduation.
Well, then maybe we can pass the crutch.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah.
Um...
It's a walker at sixty-five, it's not a crutch, she needs a walker.
We have gone in periodically, I've had the deputies go in and meet the new, uh, new substance control, uh, lady, seems to be a very nice lady. She, we have talked and, uh, coordinated, uh, some of our efforts in the need that, uh, she needs law enforcement, so we're, we're on board with that. She knows who we are and, um, hopefully we'll have a smooth transition when that goes into effect.
Great, that's good.
Thank you.
Uh, Tom stopped in the office here yesterday when I was there and then he just, just helped, uh, our personnel also, got the phone numbers.
Good. Other department updates, Jake or Dave?
Yeah, uh, the old evidence floating down here on Second Street, it's, uh, the insider remodel has been completed for, by work group. Evidence floating down here on Second Street, so, impound yard.
South Lake Annex.
Yeah, that's right.
But you said the old.
Well, it's, it's not the sheriff's. Evidence is really needed more, so.
Okay.
The new wall.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway, the remodel work's been, been done, our work crews, um, sheet rock insulation, um, dead water, we did the bathroom, put the bathroom together. And we helped, uh, Dave and Junior, uh, our work crew did sheet rock, their side of things, uh, coming together. So if you have time during the news hour or sometime in the morning, you might stop down and check it out, there's been some pretty good pride and ownership from the clients. They put some work into it, uh, it actually looked very nice.
Wonderful. No, that's, I'm glad to see we're gonna be able to use that, have, we've got lots of storage there for impound and...
We have our, we have all our tools and stuff out of here, so, you know, more spread out, so we can see what we have and then on the backside as well, we have room to store lawn mowers and weeders and...
Yeah.
Dave has room to, and David Junior has room for their outside equipment as well, so it's not sitting out in the weather.
On that, uh, east entrance, I believe it is, did we get some more gravel in there to take care of when we have wet weather? I know it's really, when we went down there and looked at it quite some time ago, it had been gravelled, but around that area, it's really a lot of... I know it was really, when we went down there and looked at it quite some time ago, it had been gravelled, but around that area, it's really, a lot of that clay soil was at the surface.
We have gravelled there. It has not been spread yet, but.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Good. Anything else, Jake?
I'm done.
Dave?
I really don't have any at this time.
Denise?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Winters, what is on updates?
I don't, I think tomorrow, what I'm working on rather than stuff will be discussion tomorrow, legal, so I I don't know. I think it's this time.
Okay. I'm gonna get my viewing, uh car with shoe fits tomorrow.
Super. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Are we here tomorrow? Was it, was it even here tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Was broken from one of the draw flying off one of the deputies' rigs.
It was, it was, yeah.
On thirty-one possible.
It was actually, it wasn't the deputy's rig, it was the sheriff's.
Actual sheriff?
Yep.
Deschutes County sheriff?
Yeah, that, let's clarify that. That's probably where we were responding to paisley.
I knew, I knew it was moving so placey.
Being at a public meeting, we're just gonna drive willy-nilly crazy. We're responding to a person with a knife that threatened to, were deputies. Um and he had barricaded himself in a trailer, so.
But my car was parked in the garage when we broke it off.
And you had been in there for forty-five minutes, and even you were driving.
I started to say move to adjourn, but I liked that comment, so.
I will, I will say really quick, Heather, fight our executive director for our East Cascades Workforce Investment Board, uh Zrueb. And we'll be here next Monday, the twenty-fourth. I'm meeting with her for a little while. And then Kevin Bradley, who's been one of the chief uh individuals with COIC, is gonna be here. And I've mentioned that to you, Commissioner, uh on the twenty-fifth at ten AM. And uh we're just gonna talk about where we're at, where uh our service providers and the future of specifically Lake and Klamath counties are related to workforce department, so. Uh anything else, Denise?
No.
We'll go ahead and adjourn at five minutes, two minutes. Thank you, Sheriff.